All right, welcome everyone. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Jersey Village City Council for Monday, November 15th, 2021. The time is now 7:01 PM and we do have a quorum of council present, which brings us to invocation and Pledge of Allegiance by Frank Marr, Assistant Fire Chief.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Just take a few seconds to thank our Lord for the beautiful weather we've been having the last few days, that we had a good time to enjoy it and could be outside, spend our time with our families. God, I ask you to bless our country and bless the leaders of Jersey Village in particular. Thank you, Lord, for giving us this form of government where our citizens have the right to come up and voice their opinions and talk to the council in person. Bless our mayor and council as they make some tough decisions. Bless all of our city employees and volunteers and their families as they work to make our city safer and a more enjoyable place to live and work in. We give thanks that the virus seems to be on a downhill slide, that these numbers continue to go down, and that we can get through Thanksgiving without an outbreak. Last and not least, we ask you to bless our Jersey Village Falcon football team as they start on their way to state playoffs. May God bless us and let us give thanks for your guidance, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Frank. Let's see, we have no presentations tonight, so that brings us to citizen comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. The first card I have is from James McDonald.
Must be a slow day if I'm first. Hello, my name is James McDonald and I live at 16306 Acapulco. First, I would like to address you as captain of the championship-winning Senate Avenue Ball Kickers. Where is our parade? We won the kickball championship in nothing. Even though we only won one game all season and basically the championship and won the championship by default, it doesn't negate the fact that we do a parade. Moving on. This month's winner of the JV Citizen of the Month is a very deserving family and this award is, this nomination comes from Jess and Matt Gomer. I probably butchered that and now it's on the record, I'm sorry. They have nominated Steve and Sarah Guerrero on Acapulco Drive from Jess. Quote, "When our side was without power and they still have power, had power, they cooked us breakfast, let us charge our phones, and provided everything we could need during this time. They are the best neighbors and we are very grateful for them," end quote. This was probably a small gesture for Steve and Sarah, but in their time of need, this was a huge showing of love and appreciation for their neighbors. Sarah has also gone above and beyond lately with the post-PTO and supporting the kids. She recently spent her time helping set up and participate at the field day. It's people like Steve and Sarah that go into making this a great little city. Now I'm trying out a new segment called Good News JV to help counteract all the negativity and complaints there, mostly from next door. This month, it's hard to miss the excitement at JV High School. The band in Color Guard qualified for state UIL competition where they competed amongst the top 38 schools in Texas. While they did not get the win, we are sure, we are still very proud of their accomplishments. Also, the JV Falcons continue their dominating playoff tour in the UIL 6A state tournament. They've already won two games but have four more to go to the state championship. They do play at Prigden Field this Friday at 7:00. Get out, support your Falcons, and relive all your angsty teenage dreams at the stadium. Lastly, the Senate Avenue Brewery Run Club is hosting its second annual Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving morning. The cost to attend is canned goods to donate to the Cypress area ministries or food shelter. Come out, burn some turkey calories before you have to reluctantly spend the rest of the day with your family. We start at 7:30 AM sharp. Thank you.
Thank you, James. The next card I have is from Ronald Templeton.
Okay, my name is Ronald Templeton. I live on Crawford Street, right at the very end where the barricade is. And the situation there, whenever the street was laid out, that road is supposed to go through, okay? And so then when they changed the Beltway 8, well then it never went through. But say probably at the center by driveway, the road slopes to that barricade and water ponds and gets slimy and it's been that way. I've been here about 30 years. But anyway, my issue with that is that, and then I own my house and I own the property lot next to it. And the lot next to it, there's been a large ponding area, you know, but they're taking, they're going to pave that, they're taking care of that. But I don't understand, you know, how they picked what they were going to do and all, but I feel very sure whatever all this drainage is, it's going to help a lot. But, okay, I've talked to Harry Ward, he's, and I talked to the mayor, and then I called, let's see, there's a little handout came by that said that about they might turn off the water or something. Well, there are two names on there, and I get the impression they're probably the principals. And so I talked with, I'm not real good on names, but I talked with one of them maybe a couple of weeks ago, and he said, oh yeah, we're paving, we're going to go all the way to the barricade, you know? And so then come to find out, well, they're not apparently going to do that. You know, they're stopping right at my property line. And so then what I did, I called that other owner again, but I got a second number and I forget his name, but he said he doesn't know anything hardly about it, but come to the meeting, they're going to have a meeting at 2:30 at that trailer deal on the golf course. And so he said Harry was going to be there, but there was only two people there. Well, and so this guy showed the plans like, he said, oh man, this is federal. Man, if I did that, I'd mess up the drainage, I can't touch the drainage, oh my gosh. I mean, the federal doesn't have anything to do with the drainage, Harris County Flood Control does, you know? And so then I asked that guy, you know, well, if they do anything, would you be willing to, you know, the city pay you some money or whatever? And so, oh no, 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 we couldn't, we had the federal, oh no, we couldn't, you know, he doesn't understand. I mean, I was district hydraulic engineer with the highway department district office. I was also the district bridge engineer. I'm very familiar with, and I dealt with flood control many times. But anyway, and Harry said, well, you know, he doesn't have any authority to, you know, someone has to allocate the money, the funds for it. And that would be a very good time to do it because they're paving it, you know, my lot's the only one they're skipping, you know? And I don't know how hard it would be to, you know, to get the money, you know? But I wish that you guys would consider it, you know, because it drains and, okay, it's not going to make any difference on the drainings because at the end of the barricade, there's a wood fence. Water's not going to go anywhere, you know? And it's been doing this forever. Okay, several years ago, they put out a list or a request for people that might have a drainage problem where they might raise the payment or something, and I put it in, but nothing ever happened, you know? Anyway, that's my problem, I appreciate you guys helping me out on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next card I have is from Kimberly Anow.
My name is Kimberly Anow and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane, and this is my third informational installment on Jersey Village history and facts. From 1938 to 1948, Clark Wilcox Henry ran the Eiffel Elm Dairy Ranch with his wife Bessie. Clark's herd of Jersey cattle is said to be one of the best. The ranch invited people from the surrounding areas on Sundays to attend dairy farming functions, hear live music, watch the making of ice cream, and to see Rachel, Bessie's favorite of the 125 registered Jerseys shipped from their homeland. Jersey cattle come from Jersey Island, which is part of the Channel Islands and British Isles. It is off the coast of France and is due south of Bristol, England. This proximity to mainland France would have allowed cattle to be relocated from the French regions of Normandy and Brittany to the island, which likely played an important role in the development of the breed. Jersey Island is 45 square miles in size and the largest parish settlement is called St. Heeler. Jersey cows are believed to be one of the oldest breeds of cattle. The breed flourished from the 1860s until World War I in countries across the globe. Early records indicate that the breed was brought to America in 1657 by the early settlers. Thousands of Jerseys continue to be shipped to the United States annually after their original introduction. On Jersey Island, there are fewer than 6,000 cattle with nearly 4,000 of these being adult milking cows. The purity of the breed on the island was maintained by a strict ban on imports in 1789. Recently, the approval to import DNA donations began, though the Jersey pure breeds are recorded in the Jersey herd book. Today, the Jersey breed is the second largest of Jersey cattle in the world. The Jerseys have an ability to adapt to many kinds of environments, the management practices of dairy farming, and climates such as southeast Texas. Jersey cows are very distinctive in their color and presentation, making them easy to identify. They can vary from a light gray or tan to a dark fawn or nearly black shade, and some Jersey cows have small areas of white coloring. Their hooves are black and their tail switches are dark. Jerseys have dark eyes and darkly pigmented skin around their eyes and noses. A true Jersey will always have a black nose bordered by an almost white muzzle. Jersey cows are relatively small in size, weighing less than 1,000 pounds, and can live 25 years or longer if they receive proper care. The fine-boned and angular body shape is due to the fact that they are milk producers and not beef producers. Jersey milk is in many ways unique. When consumed raw, Jersey cow milk is packed with nutrients. As a product, it contains 18% more protein, 20% more calcium, and 25% more butterfat than average milk. Seven vitamins and minerals are found in each cup. A person would need to consume the equivalent of 9.64 ounces of low-fat milk from a Holstein cow to equal the same amount of nutrition found in eight ounces of Jersey cow milk. It is also rich in color, which is naturally produced from keratin and extract from the grasses. Female Jersey cows are mild-mannered and even-tempered. Their friendly disposition means they bond well with humans and can feel more like family pets than milk-producing assets. Farmers find the females are well-behaved and do not resist milking, so the risk of being kicked is low. Jersey bulls, on the other hand, are prone to aggression once they reach 18 months of age. While they may look cute and cuddly, it is best to not turn your back on them. Clark Henry's legacy of dairy farming and the 1,236 acres being dedicated to a residential area for families and individuals to enjoy as a community make Jersey milk all the more enticing. Thank you.
Thank you. The final card I have is from Andrew Mitchum.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Mitchum and I live at 1581 Acapulco Drive. I take back everything I said about chickens and I want to have Jersey cows in the backyards. Sound amazing. Just wanted to make a few comments about things that were in the manager's report. The golf course, they had a few pictures with a drone or something that, of the greens that were damaged by the ice storm in February. First of all, I'm really upset I didn't know about this drone that y'all had while I was mayor, but didn't get to play with it, but looked great. The greens are coming back phenomenally. I can no longer blame bad greens for my terrible putting, but at least I'm surrounded by greens and not browns. So testament to the golf course crew, it looks amazing and they need to keep that up. And also, the golf course had a profitable month despite all of the challenges with the berm, closing the front nine every once in a while, and it's looking great over there. The other thing in the packet, looks like home elevations from FEMA. I want to commend this council for continuing to commit to all aspects of flood mitigation. The application this year has a BCA score of 1.38 and it's under $10 million, which is a big advantage. If you look at 2017, it was a 1.52 BCA that was funded. 2018 was 1.31, that was funded. The only ones that did not get funded were below, were below 1.38. So I think that's a competitive application. I want to commend Austin Bleece for continuing to be a fantastic grant writer, and I'm looking forward to the diverse list of streets this year as well. It was all over the neighborhood, it looked like it wasn't just one part of the neighborhood, but it was, it was comprehensive of the whole neighborhood. My last thing I wanted to chat about is traffic calming. Unfortunately, this week, there was a death of a pet on Jersey in Acapulco. We've done a few traffic calming studies over the years. It's been a constant discussion, but a lot of that discussion was about cut-through traffic, and I think we're missing a little bit of the point. Not so much about cut-through, but we need to focus on speeding and especially distracted driving. It takes just a few seconds of you glancing down at your phone or at your GPS to miss a few blocks of Jersey Village. And obviously, there are pets, there are kids, that's a growing population that we need to be more aware of. According to a traffic calming study that was conducted, I believe in 2017, just one part of Jersey Drive has 850 cars per day that traverse that stretch. 96% are traveling at or below the posted limit, which sounds very, very good. Unfortunately, 28 of those cars on average are going above the speed limit. Four of those cars are going 10 miles an hour above the speed limit. That's pretty crazy, four cars, and if you're out there playing with your kids or walking your dog, you notice that 10% above. That's just one stretch. I think those numbers don't make a lot of sense for pulling police officers off of other duties. There's no way they can write 32 tickets on that one stretch every single day, that's just not feasible. What can be done, and I think one thing that we kind of dismissed in the traffic calming studies that we've done over the last few years, is a word called chicane, which I learned how to pronounce today. I don't know why we disregarded it, maybe it's because it's a French word, but a chicane is an extension of the curb. It's an alternating curb extension that causes a slight narrowing of the road, much like a parked car on the side of, on the side of a street. So if you notice, if you have parked cars on the side of the street, especially if they're alternating, people slow down, they pay attention, they don't want to damage their own car. They slow down, we've seen this with our little green guy on our street, and it's very, very effective. Again, it causes people to slow down and pay attention. Those are the two things we're looking for in the neighborhood. Also, they're not as jolting as a speed bump or a speed hump. So I think you can also make them decorative. There are neighborhoods in the region that have them, they're very nice neighborhoods like West University, River Oaks, Upper Kirby, I've seen them there, they use native plants to be low maintenance and use less water. You can probably find some local businesses that are willing to sponsor the decorations on those streets, on those, or local service organizations. You can actually put them in temporarily using cones just to see if they actually work. I think this is something that can maybe be done in-house. The city's doing a fantastic job, Harry Ward and his crew are doing a fantastic job of repairing the sidewalks in the city in-house and saving a lot of money that way. I think it's something that we could look into. Again, we already have the traffic studies, we already have those traffic patterns, but my time is up. I just want to say it'd be great if you could look into that and maybe bring that up in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, those are all the comments, which brings us to the city manager's report. Austin Bleece.
Mayor, councilors, the report's in front of you and staff's happy to answer any questions you might have.
Austin, can you give a brief summary, just high level, of the status of Wall Street and the berm projects?
So berm project is pretty much to a punchless status. They've got a little bit left to do, but mostly done. Wall Street project is nearing completion. I would say it's in the 90-ish percent range, depending upon whether, they should be able to get the last of the pavement done within the next four weeks or so.
Any other questions for the city manager? Okay. We will move along to the consent agenda. Are there any council members that wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for consideration under the regular agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to discuss items F5 and F6.
Items 5 and 6 will be moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the remaining consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The consent agenda as modified passes, which will bring us to our regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda, Consider Resolution Number 2021-74, authorizing applications for the FEMA fiscal year 21 FMA grant to elevate homes. Austin Bleece, city manager.
Mayor, councilors, we have before you tonight the resolution to authorize the application of the FY21 home elevation grants. Since 2017, there have been about 165 homes identified for potential of elevation. Since that time, 37 homes have been awarded grant funding, three are being mitigated as part of TIRS. Three, two others were purchased by FEMA through Harris County Flood Control, and three others were mitigated by individual property owners. That leaves about 120 homes. We've done the process of going through the benefit cost ratio, the benefit cost analysis to try and make sure we've got the best, most competitive grant that we can. So the grant that we have here for tonight has 16 homes to be elevated, a BCA of 1.38. Total project cost is expected to be $5,43,170, with the federal cost share being 4.4 million, meaning the city cost share is approximately $623,000. Happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Any questions for the city manager or discussion on this item?
Austin, I was, 16 sounds about average of what we usually do, is that right?
We try to do between the 15 and 20, just kind of depends upon the mix of benefit cost ratio and total cost. We want to try and keep the total cost at about the $5 million mark.
And Austin, do we have, do we have any indication that the state may be offering any sort of funding for local match?
They haven't come out and said one way or another yet. It's possible they will, but we don't know for sure.
This isn't a question, it's more of a statement, and I would concur with the last speaker we had, that this is fantastic. I mean, we noticed 130 some odd homes, or more than that, I'm sorry, 165. I mean, so we're taking all different approaches towards flood mitigation. Some are on a very macro level, like the Wall Street and berm project, some are at a very micro level, like individual homes and whatnot. And, you know, even streets are going out and trying to remove, you know, replat the streets and, or little, what are those?
The panels, put new panels in?
Yeah, just, yeah. So, you know, remove even out, and so we get rid of even those small pockets of water. I mean, this is, we're doing what we can, as we can, as a city. You know, there's even working with E127 with Harris County, and so I kind of brought this out. I don't think there will be any apprehension to approving this, is my guess, but I just wanted to highlight for the citizens, the work that we're doing, we're still doing, and will continue to do to ensure that, you know, we mitigate what we can, as we can.
Yeah, one thing that I think bears repeating, I know the people up here on the dais probably have heard this many, many times, but I still hear the occasional question from citizens where they ask, well, we have this work that's going on in the bayou, the Wall Street project is nearing completion, you're going to have the golf course berm, I thought that was supposed to solve the problem, why do we need all of these additional things like home elevations or like the buyout program, the tear down and rebuild that we've started working on? And, you know, when we did our flood study back in 2017, one of the things that was made apparent was that even if we did everything on the list as far as the structural changes, you know, all of this work that everyone refers to, that everyone always focuses on, there are still going to be several dozen homes at a minimum that will be in danger even after all of that work is done, that would still be at serious danger of flooding. And we knew going into this that there were going to be, I think we initially in the study looked at about 60 or so homes, somewhere around there. I think we've actually kind of expanded that a little bit more just out of, you know, storms are getting more intense, we're kind of taking a more cautious approach and kind of trying to expand that out a little bit. But the good news is, we're still making good progress. We've had, I think, more hits than misses when it comes to these sorts of applications. As Andrew mentioned during his public comments, this is probably going to be one of the better benefit cost ratio applications we've made, so I think we've got a pretty good chance of this one also succeeding unless something seriously changes in terms of everyone else's applications. So obviously, our goal is to keep plugging away and keep doing what we're doing until we get everybody out of the flood plain, at least to the best we can. So with that, unless anyone else has any other discussion on this, I welcome a motion.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2021-74.
Great job hitting 1.3, second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those against? Any abstentions? The resolution carries. Which brings us to the second item on our regular agenda. Consider Ordinance Number 2021-38, amending the budget of such city, of such city for the fiscal year beginning, that's the way it's written, begin on October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022, to provide for an increase in Department 23 incentives budget and providing for severability. Mark Bits, fire chief.
Mayor and council, when we prepared the budget this year, HR uses a position budgeting system that erroneously budgeted the incorrect amount of $5,760 for our incentive budget. It should have been $13,500. We caught that in the last several weeks. So we're bringing this item to you to increase the budget another $7,740, to bring it to the $13,500 required for incentives in communication.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the chief or discussion on this item?
Yeah, chief, the reason I brought this out is I think budget needs to be, you know, talked about if possible, but it looked like last year, the budget was also $13,500. So it was an oversight, as we're going through all, every single line item during council. You know, but I'm happy to do that. Can you describe what's involved, what goes into the incentives, what that pays for them?
So that pays for higher-class certifications. Some of our dispatchers are intermediate certified, some are advanced certified, so as they reach master level, it increases monthly. They get a little bit more money in their paycheck per month, and that's what incentives do.
It sounds like a good cause.
Any other discussion or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Move to approve Ordnance Number 2021-38.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes, which brings us to mayor and council comments. I'm going to start down on this end with council member Woben Horst.
Go Falcons.
Go Falcons!
Yep. I was really happy to see we're already working on sidewalks for this fiscal year. The other thing I wanted to do is give a shout-out to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. The Fall Frolic was just a quintessential JV event. I'm really thankful for all the volunteers that worked really hard with city staff to make that event a success. I had a great time, and I know a lot of other JV people did too.
Yeah, I'll second my salute to the volunteers, James. Also wanted to thank all our veterans. Veterans Day was last week, I know we have quite a number that live in this city. And so thank you guys, and thank your families for the sacrifices you've made and ensuring our freedom. You mentioned the Fall Frolic Holiday in the Village is December 4. It's a Saturday, if I don't have my days mixed up, so looking forward to that. Volunteers are needed. We have three open committee positions, and I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Go Falcons!
I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. It's looking forward to having more of a normal holiday this year. So I know we'll enjoy it at my home, so I hope all of you have the same.
I will also say, go Falcons! The Fall Frolic was amazing, Doris and her team did a great job. It was the best one yet, and I really look forward to next year, bigger and better. It was great. Also, the Parade of Lights, this will be the first time that we are going to do a light parade, and we are looking for floats to enter. So you'll get some details about that coming up, but get with your street, get with your Boy Scout, whoever you affiliate with, and I look forward to seeing some new floats this year. And then I also just wanted to, once again, say how awesome JV is. As Andrew spoke about, the unfortunate accident with Abuelo's little pug on the main street. I created a GoFundMe, and it was over $1,000 within three days, just from all of y'all. So I will be taking him tomorrow to go pick out his pug. He is very, very excited and feels very, very loved, and that's just another reason I just really love this city.
All right, thank you to everyone. So I, you know, if you get a little frustrated by the fact you come up here and you make comments and you don't receive a response right away, we get it. It's one of those things that state law keeps us from being able to do much in that regard. But this Thursday, right here in the Civic Center at 7:00 p.m., I am holding a town hall, just me. So that way, we don't have to worry about all of those restrictions. You can ask me whatever questions you want about our city government, and I'll be right out there answering them. And I'll stick around until there's no more questions, or until Austin tells me he's gotta lock up the Civic Center, I gotta go. But, so as I promised, we're gonna do those on a quarterly basis. Last time, Councilmember Watson and I did around budget time, we did a little town hall to discuss that, and this is just another one of those town halls. So I hope you can make it, if you can't, that's fine. Another three months or so from now, I'll schedule another one, and hopefully you'll be able to make it to that one. Other than that, I want to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving. I know that the thing that I'm most thankful for is for living in such a great city where people are so engaged and such a, you know, so involved in making this city the great place that it is. So with that, the meeting is adjourned.